...meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. And I need to announce, under the open meeting law, that we are recording this, both audio and by tape. I need to ask if anyone else here is recording the meeting. There are none, we can proceed. The first board in business is a discussion regarding future changes at Brownstone Gardens. Ray Miller and Chris Carr.
Yeah, I'm Ray Miller, I'm president of the Board Directors, Brownstone Gardens. Valen Richards, also a member, as in West Denver. This is Chris Carr and some Chris Carr for the maintenance, they take care of all the property manager and whatnot. What we're here for tonight is, we're not asking for anything. It's just an informational meeting to discuss some of the changes that we plan to make at Brownstone Gardens. We now paid off the mortgage for what we call BG1, which was the original 100-unit residence. And we're planning to merge that with what is currently known as BG2. And we want to make some changes to the units that exist and look down the road at some changes. So if you may, I'd like calling Chris to just kind of go over some of these changes. Just to give you a picture of what he's thinking of doing.
Good evening, my name is Chris Carr, and I've been in front of this board representing Brownstone Garden 1 in the 70s, Brownstone Gardens 2 in the 80s, Brownstone 3 in the 90s, and now it's 2017, and we're hopefully going to combine some of those.
And you're still 40.
And I started when I was eight. What you see in front of you is the existing site of Brownstone Gardens, it was originally a working quarry. The original 100 units are within the Loop Road, it comes off Pleasant Street, 75 Pleasant Street. That was built in 1975, under a mass housing loan. In 1985, we added two more buildings, GMH, under what's known as a HUD 202 loan, that's 32 more units. And in 1995, we added another 40 units under a 202 loan on the other side of the quarry, in a self-contained building. It is separated from that, and we hope to make it, bring it closer in some ways over the years, but we've not been very successful in that, but we're still trying. When this quarry was built, should be bought in 1974, they came before the planning board, and the entire 28-acre parcel was zoned, elderly residential district, with a cap of 200 units. Over the years, we've accumulated 172, and there have been some plans for expanding further down the road. Presently, this is upside down, but I run it this way to the mirrors. This is the site plan as it looks now, as you just saw, and I believe, under the existing zone, which was established in conjunction with the planning board and Brownstone Gardens' retirement living when it was born, the elderly residential district, I believe that there is one variance on the existing site plan. Other than that, I believe it's in complete, total conformance throughout the gap. And we have been there. Our biggest problem is aging in place. Many of our residents that moved in there 25 years ago, at age 70, are now 95 years old. And in order to go into the next stage, whether it be nursing home or assisted living, you have to be older, poorer, sicker, and as a result, it puts more pressure on us to try to maintain the people in place. However, as our infrastructure ages, that's increasingly difficult. Accordingly, the plan is, with the payoff of the first mortgage, and because we've reached 25 years with the HUD parcel, we are now allowed to prepay this mortgage, and our goal is to combine these two developments. There's presently two corporations, two sets of books, two applications, and everything like that, and combine them. Remove that lot line there, make one parcel. At the same time, we want to do some other things that will get to your attention, but being, our biggest problem being aging in place, our number one consideration is the installation of elevators. And these elevators are what you see, as brown, and these have been added in this regard to all of the existing buildings, with the exception of the one-story community building. Problem is that, and we may be back here before you in the future, we need exact measurements as to, they've altered the plant slightly, and we do not know if there'll be any setback requirements that we need to get a variance for, or something like that. But this is our number one concern. Secondly, after that, because of the amount of money we're spending due to the installation of the elevators, the fire code kicks in, and we have to fire sprinkle in these buildings. That is not a hardship, it is our goal to do that, it is just, you know, difficult economically. The third thing is also another aging in place issue, which is, the great minds of the 60s and 70s thought that the intent was to get people to socialize, and so they built one community laundromat. And so people were supposed to bring their laundry out, do their laundry, socialize, interact, and everything like that, and that's wonderful, except February, when it's eight inches of snow on the ground already at 10 o'clock in the morning, you don't feel good, and you're on the second floor of a building 400 feet away. So, so one of our main goals is to add laundromats in those green spaces, in all the, so that every residential building will have a laundromat. Those are our key concerns. In addition to that, we're talking about new roofs, some new heating plants, some new hot water plants, all new pavement throughout the development, and many ADA changes. Ramps in the parking lots, and then things like that. The community baths have to be updated, upgraded with ADA issues. The kitchenette in the community room does not, we will not, we will abandon it and build a new kitchen, 8 to ADA specifications, same with the management office, et cetera. Be a lot of changes throughout. Also, the handicapped apartments that were built here in the 70s and 80s, today's non-handicapped apartment that we build is far more handicap accessible than our handicap accessible apartments of the 70s days. So they will undergo a major change also. There's a lot of other things. The engineers have been in, on behalf of HUD, making recommendations as to what we have to do. We are very pleased that today the governor announced a $1 million second mortgage to Brownstone Gardens that we put in for last December. Now, we have the million, it's the first seven that we're looking for still. And hopefully, I have every belief that we will be successful in this. We have done a similar instance to this for some of our other clients. We have installed elevators on these buildings, and we have done exactly what we're talking about today as far as moving. One further thing that, the site was zoned for 200 units, we currently have 172. We have looked in different ways, there is a fairly significant amount of wetlands on the site. We have been before the Wetlands Commission several times, and we have kind of an outstanding thing here where this, we originally tried to, in the future, what we hope to do is add one more building right here. And if we added 28 acres, 28 units, it would be out to here and cringing upon the wetlands. So we've cut it back, that is the wetlands line right there, that is, see right there. But this, right now, is not in the plans in this go-go. However, once this is completed, that's the immediate next step, is that, and that, after doing this, complicates us in front of you. So the lawyers are going to dig into this and know exactly what we need. Before the next time we come to you, we're going to say, we need setback waivers, we don't need waivers, we need whatever it is in work with you. And lastly, we also understand that because of the change in town government, there's some authority swings that we're in the planning board, or, excuse me, we're in the selectmen and now in the planning board, and we have to acclimate ourselves to that as well, because we're not honestly up to speed on that. We have to crawl before we walk and run. You know, I'm pretty proud of this, and I could stand here and talk all night, but I'd rather have any questions you have in that regard, otherwise, I know you have a whole cast of characters out here ready to go.
Just two comments, Mr. Carr. One is, if you're talking about variances, you're talking about zoning work with heels, not us, we don't do variances. And yes, we did change the zoning bylaw. Originally, my understanding was, when Brownstone 1 went in, we didn't have site plan review in the bylaw.
Site plan was reviewed, went to the Board of Selectmen. Now that we no longer have a Board of Selectmen, and we do have site plan review, the rewrite of the zoning bylaw would put this under site plan review. And so, when your plans are finalized, you would have to submit basically a modified site, an amended site plan, which we would review and hopefully approve. We'd have to look at the amendment.
With the exception of small juts out from the elevators, I don't expect any significant thing, but planning for the future with that will add some complications and like that. One of the major things that we will be spending money on is, by putting fire sprinklers in all these buildings and elevators, we now have to bring in three-phase power, which we don't have, and we also are going to have to bring in dedicated water lines for the sprinkler systems themselves. So all of this main thoroughfares are all going to be dug up, and it'll be dangerous and noisy and dirty for a few months, but hopefully it'll be worthwhile in the end.
Basically, for site plan review, we don't concern ourselves with what goes on inside the building. Okay? But if there's any alteration to the outline of the building, that would have to be what we look at. Likewise, if you decide, when you tear everything up, you're going to realign the roads, that would be part of site plan review.
In that case, we will be back in front of you for site plan review, I promise.
And if you do any realignments on the roads, I would recommend that you consult with the fire department first, because that is always a big concern of ours on site plans, especially on something like this, because their equipment has changed since 1970s, and their requirements for turning radiuses and all that kind of thing have changed. And so any alteration would have to meet their approval. So it's better if you talk to them first, and then they'll, you know, you'll do it right the first time.
That's excellent advice, and just, I tell you, as I said, each unit will have a small addition, for lack of a better term, for the elevator shop, and under this guide, in order to accommodate the new building, someday in the future, we had planned to move the road closer to the wetlands, still significantly far away, but that is in the, now, whether it turns, after the fire department review, it may change dramatically, but I mean, that's an initial first look.
Right. Anybody else have any questions on this?
I got a question. I got a question, it's kind of a little, maybe out in the left field a little bit. You see, you got the new building J attached to G, and you're trying to get 28 more units, but you can't, because you're going to get into the wetlands.
Right.
What would happen if you put J as part of E instead of part of G? Could you get your 28 units in that way?
There's a desire to get to 28, but it's not an overwhelming desire, you know what I'm saying? We don't, if we don't get 28, we're not going to.
I don't mean to be encouraging you to build bigger, but it just seems like it's something you can solve your problem.
We've also looked at, just so you know, we've looked at, in the case of B building, we could add two units on the end here, we could add two units on the end here.
Yeah, but if you mix it all up, it costs a lot more money. If you do it all in one building, it's a lot cheaper.
Well, I think this is up to Brownstone.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. It's a development site.
And they'll be back in front of us again.
Obviously, now we are going to be back. But I'll have an architect standing here instead of me, all right? He'll be able to tell you an intelligent answer.
Thank you very much for giving us the heads up.
Congratulations on your first part of the job.
Thank you very much.
We're very excited.
It was a big day for us.
And it's past 6:15, so we have Gary Stone and Jim White from Whitestone Partners.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Jim White. Nice to meet you.
I'm Gary Stone.
Hi, Gary.
Good to meet you.
Thank you, everybody. So, what can we do for you gentlemen?
Well, we are here hoping that you can meet us in person here, because there have been a couple confusing incidents before where we didn't, we weren't here. The first one was, we filed the site waiver, and we're told that it was basically paperwork, don't worry about it, you know, the interpretation, you know, of the site, it shouldn't be a problem. The next time, we had met with Robin and Bob Parent to discuss everything, put it back on to the docket, we had a date established, realized that there was a conflict with vacation, and had been in conversations with Robin, and we found out ex post facto that we were on the docket when it was supposed to have been moved. So we want everyone to know that we didn't show up because of the confused, confusion there. It had nothing to do with us not showing up, you know, in person. So what we're here for is because we believe that an interpretation of the bylaws is really incorrect, and we've reviewed this many times previous to filing the waiver, and, you know, to this day. We just simply contend that, that this is something that we should be able to do, you know, allowing Baltasar to use our property for staging site for their work on Converse Street. And so, you know, we've gone to the police, they have absolutely no problem with it, they don't think there are safety issues. Gone to the DPW, and the DPW has stated that there's no impact on traffic flow. We've gone to our neighbors, and they were all perfectly fine with everything that we've done. And, and so we look at it, this is a benefit to us, absolutely. We're self-interested in this, because we've worked out a deal that benefits Baltasar as well, so that they have a location to use for their work on Converse Street. So, we're trying to understand, as we look at this, and we listen to the conversation that was had initially, and understand why on our property, we cannot do this. And so, when you go back to the very first meeting, it was initially, and a large part of the meeting, was discussing why East Long Meadow should help Long Meadow out, or the DOT on their project. And you're, you're on our side, right? You know, we're the, we're the small business owners, we're the residents, we're the ones who invest in this town, we keep our money here, we're growing here, we continue to invest. This is helping us, and it's not hurting anyone. And in our opinion, it is an interpretation that is possibly erroneous, might, of course, I'm biased, but in order to kind of take an argument and fulfill a purpose there, that isn't really what it's about. In our opinion, you know, this is about us, not about Long Meadow, not about setting a precedent, it's about us being able to continue to do what we're doing. And we think that it's fair. And so we have, picture here, this is today, this is what you see.
Okay.
Now, you can see the fence, you can see the fence constructed, we were, we were told to put up a fence, within a few days after that, GMH Fence was out there constructing that fence.
Yeah, but these folks at Baltasar made that happen immediately, they acted on it.
There was a question about the street being cleaned. They currently clean it three times a week. If there's a storm, if we see dirt, mud, anything, we give them a call and they come out. So there's no limit to what they'll do.
And we care, it's our business, right? It's our customers that are coming in, it's our reputation. So, and they've been phenomenal with that. So, and what we were told by the DPW is that the initial incident that set this entire thing off was a bicyclist, and he was actually referring to somewhere down the street on the other side.
I have no idea, because we were not.
Well, we can, because we spoke with them about it. So, and then our other point, when, when it does come to precedent, and this, in no way do we have anything against our own crews utilizing our schools, but at Maple Shade School, this is, this is what you see, and this is out of school. So, and again, I don't have a problem with it, because it's making Maple Shade have a very nice street to one day drive-through again.
Now, these projects are temporary, we know Maple Shade is, our project is temporary, it's not a year-round thing. So it's, it's a small period of time that we're asking for.
How much longer do you think that's going to go on? It looks like they're making great progress on it.
Doing very well.
Yeah, these gentlemen are from Baltasar.
Hey, I'm Justin Roy with Baltasar, this is Ralph Cataria, he's working directly on the project.
Roughly, how much longer do you think the project's going to take, I mean, before you're out of there?
Yeah, we're actually on the tail end of the project, where, you know, by contract, we had till July of 2018 to finish the job. We're well ahead of schedule, we're hoping to be finished with the job within a month, month or so, so we're definitely beginning to wind down.
Yeah, so, yeah, depleting the stuff out of Jim's property already, moving stuff out of there, and like Justin said, probably the most two months will be completely done out of lump out of.
But then we'll have to transition, so some of the, the equipment and some of the dirt that's there now is actually ours, and going to be used for our grading and leveling of the land, so it'll be used for the improvement of our property. So they're going to start transitioning out. Some of that, you were showing me a pile tonight, that's going to be starting tomorrow or the next day, and then our stuff will be done.
Have you filed a site plan yet for your improvements in your property? I don't remember.
Well, we had it in the initial one, so we, we put an addition on, and so it was initially there.
So the improvements you're going to make are already approved under site plan?
Right.
So you're going to be transitioning from simply a storage place for these people to completing your site plan?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and that'll be happening over the next couple of months, hopefully?
Hopefully, hopefully very soon, you know? And I know these gentlemen don't want to commit to something, you know, that isn't...
Of course, I mean, this stuff happens, we know that.
Right, but it has been moving, you know, at a good clip, and, and for us also, you know, we want to be able to utilize that area, because it is, you know, it is pretty tight for us. So, you know, having that gravelled down will be a great benefit to our business, and something that this board had mentioned as well, and something that you want to happen. So this whole plan, this program, has made it economically viable for us, because they've got the equipment in, so it's, you know, clearing it out, and, and, you know, we see it as a win-win, and quite frankly, a win for the town as well.
Again, we, when we look at a waiver like that, we have to consider not just your project, but we're setting a precedent, okay, for this sort of storage, construction storage within the industrial garden park. And if we allow the waiver, there's a possibility somebody's going to come in and say, oh, well, I'm going to do this full-time, you know, not for a temporary project. And so we have to be very careful about issuing waivers, that we don't set precedents, and I hope you understand that.
I would.
This is nothing personal, you know, against your company.
And I would, I would agree with that, George, that, that then it should be, at the next time, and I don't know how it works, in the bylaws, to put in another, you know, point 2A, or whatever, that specifically states this cannot be for more than X amount of time. Because as I read it, there is nothing there that says we can't do that on our property.
Which, which...
Or on a case-by-case basis?
Which paragraph are you looking at?
This was, I believe, what you had read in the first meeting, and I just have a section of it, it's 3.08.
Right, industrial uses.
That's correct. And all it says is, "No use shall be permitted which would be detrimental or offensive, or tend to reduce the property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dirt, odor, fumes, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, et cetera." So we have dirt. We don't have refuse, we don't have any of the others, we have dirt. And we have dirt piles all around town. I do agree, as a lifelong resident, that I don't want to live in a town that looks, you know, that's a mess.
Right.
I don't. But I also believe that we want to foster an environment that allows those who are, one, residents, property owners, and business owners, to grow and to assist them in that. And I, I just believe that this is fair and, you know, a rightful use of our property.
And we don't feel that it would reduce property values in any way.
And since we've, we've spoken with our neighbors, and those are the ones who would be directly affected, and they do not have a problem, and have not lodged any, any complaints.
Any comments from the board?
I just have a question. There's nothing in the deed, in your deed, that restricts rental property?
Well, we, we own the property.
I know, but you received it, did you buy it from West Mass?
No, no.
And there's nothing in the deed, in the creation of the industrial park, that says you can't use the property for rental purposes?
No, and I, and I would tell you, if you look next door to us, that building, there's probably eight or nine renters in there, so...
I'm more referring to non-property, non-physical location, non-building.
I can't, I can't tell you from seven or eight years ago when we bought the property, I know I did read over the contract, I never saw anything to that mention.
Well, while I do feel your hardship, and I'm sorry that, whatever happened, our apologies, whatever happened with your last meeting, we were unaware. My concern is more of setting a precedence, and like you said, there is nothing written in our bylaws that there is a timeframe, or it can only be for three months, six months, eight months. And detrimental to the property value would be if it was there for years on end. So if we allow one, we have to allow all. So my concern is in setting the precedence, moving forward, that others are allowed to do this as well, without timeframe, because with a site plan review, there's not, we're not saying, okay, here's your site plan review, but it's only for 30 days. So that, that is my concern.
Personally, I would have been happier if we had actually, instead of asking for a waiver, you had submitted a site plan, because that would give us control over what it looked like, what was stored there, and particularly, my concern was with the, originally, with not having a good tracking map there, with getting, you know, the trucks going in and out, and getting stuff into the street. And that, filing a site plan would probably, we might have been more inclined to approve it rather than a waiver, which says, no, it's okay, you don't need, you don't need any oversight on. But where we are now, and we're starting, you're starting to clean the site off, so you're starting to move it out, I think, at this point, you're moving in the right direction. We can have a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer, and suggest that because you're in the process of decommissioning this, and transitioning to your own construction, that it may not be necessary to enforce, but we need to have that conversation with, because we don't enforce, we have the conversation with the enforcement officer, okay? That way, we don't issue a waiver, we're not saying that we absolutely agree with this, but we're also saying that we're not going to, we're going to try to make the town not punish you in any way financially for doing this. I can't promise that that's going to happen, because I don't have control over the officer. But, do you have a comment on that, Denise?
Well, I would think that that sounds reasonable, as you said, they're heading in the right direction, but, but I also agree with maybe some kind of time limit, that we tell the building official, the zoning control, zoning enforcement officer, that he waives, we waive whatever for a couple of months, or, because you all said that you thought it would be pretty well done.
That would be fair. Ninety days, they're transitioning to their own construction.
Ninety days would bring us to, close to the winter season, so you should all be done by then.
Maybe a month or so.
That would be very, very good. I mean, I don't think we'd want to see this to continue... I mean, I don't think we'd want to see this to continue through the winter.
Nor do we.
Nor do you. I understand.
And then the enforcement could come up with it.
Okay. Is the board happy with that?
I'm very happy with that.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And thank you for...
You know, we have two different points of view here.
It's a really big picture.
I understand where you're coming from, and hopefully you'll understand where we're coming from.
We do.
It's really not about Long Meadow. It's about maintaining the IGP in industrial garden park as an industrial garden. That's really where we're going, okay? So, thank you.
We're proud of our place to make this a partnership.
We're in an aesthetic business, so the things that we produce are visual, you know, we care about it, and we care about our property perceptions.
And I'm really happy about the success you've had with your business. I see your work everywhere around.
Thank you.
And it's great work.
It's obviously working.
It's hard work. It's hard. So, these are the things we don't want to, and I know you don't want to have to deal with them either. We want to focus on growing it and...
So do we. We want to keep the industrial garden park full, and we want to keep those tax revenues coming in.
Absolutely. Great. Then thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Very much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
The next thing at 6:15 is a continuation of a public hearing for National Gas Advantage on Deer Park Drive. That hearing is going to be continued again after request of...
The applicant is...
Do you have the letter?
Uh, here, yes. Oh, God. It's an email?
But...
Hi, sorry. I don't have a lot of sorts.
Jerry, I would like to find the board over your decision. Presenting your...
Oh, hi, Robin. Okay, great. Here's an email to Robin McDonald. "Hi, Robin. Based on further discussion, NGA requests that the second continuance not be scheduled for a special meeting for August..." Continuance not be scheduled for a special meeting for August 22nd. Specifically, NGA requests a continuance be scheduled for a later date to be determined. NGA received written comments and concerns from East Long Meadow Fire Chief and Police Chief that require additional work and further revision to the recently submitted plans. We hope to make those revisions in the next 30 days, and we would then request to be included in the planning board agenda. Please confirm this by request. This request is satisfactory. Thank you, Jerry Myers, Chief Operations Officer, NG Advantage LLC.
Okay, because we have to continue this to a date and time certain, otherwise we have to re-advertise in a reminder. I have decided to ask for a motion to continue this hearing to 6 o'clock on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. That gives them more than 30 days, plenty of time to get their work done, and hopefully we will not need to continue it again. But we'll see.
I will second that.
No, you have to make a motion.
I will hope, sorry. I make, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that one is done.
I'm on the wrong side.
Okay, now, the next thing is pride at 7 o'clock, so let's get through some of the new business. We have a request for waiver of site plan review for Cloud Nine Marketing Group at 674 North Main Street.
If I had said she emailed, then I didn't. But there's one more.
Cloud Nine.
Cloud Nine, got it.
Handwritten. "Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Steven Roethus, 75 Brodus Road, Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Cloud Nine Marketing Group. Owner of business is Dylan Peon. Business address is 13 Anadaga Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 674 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district..." Oh, he's got property district is Hamden. And he hasn't allowed use, so that's incorrect. "Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business operation is provided. Marketing and advertising services to companies in need. Services include paid social media and Google Ads strategy consultation, content creation, data analysis, and community management. The application's been signed and dated July 19th, 2017."
Now, obviously, the property district is wrong.
Yeah, I believe this is Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, 674. So, that's commercial.
Commercial, correct.
So, that is allowable use there. Any questions on that one?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There'll be no action on the parking plan for 225 Shaker Road. That was put on the agenda in error. That will be dealt with when a special permit is filed for that location. So, we have a request for waiver of site plan review from Scardici Productions at 132 Parker Street.
I'm glad you said it first. Property owner is Leonard Scardici. Owner's address is 132 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Scardici Productions. Owner of business is Leonardo Scardici. Business owner's address is 132 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is also 132 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is A, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation is freelance. So, it says not applicable. Number of employees is one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business operation is creative digital media sources, services, photo, video, and design. Home office for studio editing of photos and videos. No clients come to the home. All photography and video services happen off-site. The application's been signed and dated August 2nd, 2017."
So, this is a home office on Parker Street, Residence A. Any comments or questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second half.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another request for waiver of site plan review from Onset Customs at 48 Moore Street.
Property owner is John E. Murphy. Owner's address is 48 Moore Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Onset Customs. Owner of business is John E. Murphy. Business owner's address is 48 Moore Street. Property address is also 48 Moore Street. Property district is blank. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 10 hours a week. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Summary of business operation is carpentry, consisting of interior finished trim and cabinet installation. Home office located at this property. No customers, no material, no commercial vehicles at the home, strictly a home office. The application's been signed and dated May 2nd, 2017.
So, another home office in a residential area? Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second half.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another one here for, another request for waiver of site plan review
for Kind Hands Care at Home LLC at 296 North Main Street.
Property owner is Chorus Property, 296 North Main Street. Name of proposed business is Kind Hands Care at Home LLC. Owner of business is Lucille DeVell and Janet Mags. Business owner address is 87 Millbrook Drive, East Long Meadow. Property address is 296 North Main Street, Suite 20. Property district is blank. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 9 to 4. Number of employees, including the owner, are four. Summary of business is home care agency. The application's been signed and dated July 25th, 2017.
So, this is a, an office in, an office building on North Main Street.
Allowed use?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve?
Second half.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is a request for waiver of site plan review at NW, for NW Collective at 34 Center Square.
Property owner is East Long Meadow Center Village LLP. Owner's address is 40 Island Pond Road, Springfield, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is NW Collective. Owner of business is Nolan Wells. Business owner's address is 26 Riot Circle, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 24 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is business district. It's allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. Number of employees, including the owner, are four. Date of last parking plan, a copy of the same, is November 6th, 2007. Summary of business operation is boutique catering to both men and women selling clothing, shades, and accessories. The application's been signed and dated July 18th, 2017.
So, this is in the building at the far end, and it's an allowed use. It's good to see somebody filling that spot.
Absolutely. Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a signage request, sign permit request for NW Collective at 34 Center Square.
Okay, business name is NW Collective. Date is May 15th, 2017. Business owner's name and address is Nolan Wells, 26 Riot Circle, Springfield, Mass. Property owner and address is Rocco Falcone, 40 Island Pond Road, Springfield, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Square footage of proposed signs is 21.63. Square, what, inches? Square feet? Square feet, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Single-faced. It is attached to the building. It's not freestanding, no projections, no projections from the building. If attached to the building, does the sign project over vehicle away? No. Setback from property line has been blank. Distance to top of sign, vertical walls, 13 feet. Is illuminated sign. It's a permanent sign. Total number of proposed and existing signs is one. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 21.63 square feet. The estimated cost is $8,500. A sign affidavit is attached, and this is what it looks like.
And the only question I have on that is, it does not extend above the building. It's on the building.
It does not extend above the building.
No. And it doesn't have any measurements on it.
Well, but it's...
All it says is lettering square footage is 21.67 square feet at the bottom.
It's got a scale on there.
Oh, it does have scale. Correct, thank you.
But the only thing I would do is make a point, condition it on it not extending above the building, okay? Because they say it does.
Yeah, it's impossible for it to do so, so, yeah.
Well, I don't want them to suddenly decide on top of the roof.
Sure, I agree.
Okay, we ran into that with another sign within the last 12 months.
Yep.
And we want to be careful about that, so.
Okay.
Subject to it not being, extending above the roof. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Request for waiver of site plan review, Vicki Lindas at 741 Parker Street, which I believe is the, it's assisted living facility on Parker Street.
Okay, the property owner is the Reserve at East Long Meadow. Owner's address is 741 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Vicki Lindas. Owner of business is Victoria Campbell. Business owner's address is 56 Homer Street, Feeding Hills, Mass. Property address is 741 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is A, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 9 to 4. Number of employees is one. Summary of business, Senior Citizen Hair Salon inside the assisted living facility. The application was signed and dated July 25th, 2017.
Okay, on this one, I think we can only allow this if it's only for the residents of the building. This cannot be open to the public or to families or anybody else, other than the people who are actually living there. The intent is, obviously, these people are mobility restricted. They can't get out to a hair salon, and so this would provide them with an in-house facility. But it will not, there's no signage associated with it, and it will not be open to the public. So, I would ask for a motion to approve, subject to the condition that it is only for the residents of the building.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, discussion?
Any discussion?
So, do we have similar businesses in other nursing home facilities or assisted living facilities?
Not that I'm aware of. Of course, please.
Across the street had a hair salon.
Yes, you're right.
Oh, in the Bluebird area?
Bluebird Estates has a hair salon as well.
For the residents only.
For residents only.
And is that a condition?
Yeah.
That's what's placed on it?
Because it's a residential zone, it's not allowed use in the residential zone.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see, we've still got 10 minutes. We have an A&R for 47 Dearborn Street.
Mr. Chairman, there's no reason to rediscern to the record, is there?
What's that? No. Mr. Carabatta, you want to come up and explain to us what you're planning on doing?
There's a stranger to the board.
Please identify yourself and take...
Michael Carabatta, 22 Allen Street. A hair salon Dearborn Street. Maybe dealing with a neighbor to buy some more land to add it to the lot that I already own. So, the original lot is 50 by 100, by an additional 25 feet. The new lot will become 75 by 100.
Okay, so the frontage will be 75?
Correct. Such as residency, which is...
Does not change?
Actually, increases from 50 to 75.
Oh, from 50 to 75, okay.
Yeah, I think the dotted line shows existing...
Okay, so your setbacks aren't increased, but your frontage has increased.
Correct.
And what's the...
C.
Residency?
Yes.
So, 75 will make you conforming?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions on this one? This is an A&R because it has sufficient frontage. He's increasing the lot size. And all we really look at on something like this is frontage on a street like this.
He's increasing non-conformity.
Right. So, do I...
And make a motion to approve?
No, no, make a motion to endorse.
I make a motion to endorse this A&R.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? You ring none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
They're all just simple.
Have a good night.
Myler.
Myler. Sign these.
Good job.
Probably go in tomorrow and sign them. Okay. Not know if we have a therapy in the box. I don't think we do.
No.
Okay. Okay, this puts us to, we've got another seven minutes left. Minutes. Has anyone read and reviewed the minutes of May 2nd?
I asked Donna for them, and she said she does not have them yet.
Okay.
I pointed out that that's not a good precedent to set, and she said she's working I pointed out that that's not a good precedent to set, and she said she's working on it.
I agree.
I haven't seen them.
We have them here, but I haven't had a chance to look them over.
The May second?
There's a copy here, but she hasn't sent them out, so we haven't had a chance to review them.
Because I asked for them this afternoon, because I wanted to catch up on where you all...
We haven't received these via email.
Well, I will work with the department and try to see if we can't get things.
I am as well.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, you talked about trying to get these typed up so that they are legible?
Yeah.
Can we work on that a little bit, too?
So let me ask for clarification there. We're not going to get applicants that are going to come in with them typed. Are you asking that the narrative, the names and the narratives be typed by the staff so that...
But it is a possibility, because I typed them.
For a lot of them.
What we talked about was a possibility...
But you can't force people to do that.
What we talked about was setting this up as a PDF file or a Word file where the blanks, you could just literally type it in, go online, type it in, and print it off.
But if they don't, do you want the staff to give you a typed version of this?
The only issue is just being able to read the writing.
Right.
I mean, if it's printed very, very nicely, as far as I'm concerned, that would work. It's up to the chairman to make that decision, but that's really the issue.
It's actually up to me to direct the staff to do whatever.
I mean, if you look at some of these, some of these are fine, and some of these are very difficult to understand what the applicant is even trying to say.
Yeah.
Let me hear it way out all over this one here.
Part of the issue here is people show up at the window.
Right.
And they get an application, and they stand there and fill it out. I think we need to work with the staff to make sure that they don't accept things that are not legible.
Or complete.
Or complete. You know, I mean, people...
So they should review them after they've been handed them and reject them if they can't read it?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get clarification, so I can...
And again, one of the issues is, too, that once they accept it and the person walks away, if it's, if there's important information that's not on there, like the zone, or, you know, certain things are just omitted or incorrect, it's been accepted. They really need to be carefully reviewed before they're taken in. Just, we do that for special permits because they're so complicated. But on the waivers, they also need to be reviewed. And we can talk about the issues there, I think, separately offline.
Okay, but I better understand what your concerns are, and I can try to address that.
Yeah. Because really, I mean, when we issue the waiver, that all gets straightened out because the staff writes up the waiver and on the computer and prints it out, and that's the official document that says what we approved, not the application itself. But even so, you're right, Ty, we shouldn't have to struggle to figure out what it says.
And we all do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to read mine.
Okay, we've got four minutes for the next hearing, so we'll just be quiet unless anyone has anything to bring up at this point. I understand that our director is recuperating well at home, and she will be back hopefully by the twenty-first, actually, the twenty-first, I should say, not before. And things are going well in the office, so.
Between George and I, we're up there visiting Donna.
Yes.
She's not lonely.
And our next meeting is not until the first Wednesday in September, so we, Robyn should be back.
Wednesday?
Tuesday.
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 Okay.
Tuesday, I'm saying. The first Tuesday in September, and Robyn should be back long before that, hopefully, and alive and well, and we'll get things under control again for that meeting, but it's moving along.
No, there was nothing in here.
There's nothing in that. Because this is the only connection you can come up with, and it's not signed.
They're supposed to show up with a signature signed one tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If they don't, we will not consider.
Yeah, this is everything that was in the folder. In this folder, does that go back to you?
No.
To you?
No, no.
Okay, got it.
Okay, two more minutes.
And that'll start with this part.
That's entirely possible.
Okay. That's on them.
They have to command...
Right. Okay. That's on them to do.
They obviously can't go ahead without...
Help them.
But this is a...
Just a straight site plan.
Site plan review.
He just spent last week in Saratoga, so.
Oh, he did?
Wow, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the tracks open.
I have never been to Saratoga.
You haven't?
No. Have you been to Saratoga?
Oh.
Not to the great extent you guys go.
I'm not...
You gotta dress up. Don't go like a clown.
Could I go, and could I pretend like it's a Kentucky Derby?
Yes, yes, that's what you should do.
On a weekend.
On a weekend. No one's going to know me anyway.
Okay, at seven o'clock, we're going to open the continuation of the public hearing for Pride Convenience Incorporated, six eighteen North Main Street. This is a public hearing on a request for an amendment to a special permit to allow twenty-four hour operation. Anyone here from Pride would like to add anything at this point?
I would.
Please do.
Thank you. Just an empty, I didn't want to...
If you go over there so the camera can catch you. And in this public hearing, we're having a little bit of sound audio difficulty tonight, so if anyone wants to address the board, I would ask that they come to the microphone to do so because we will not be able to pick you up from the back of the room, okay?
Good evening. I am Bob Baldock from Pride.
You might want to point the microphone in your direction so that...
Okay. Since it's this way, I'll set it this way. And I'd like to just summarize which of the two locations...
Sixteen North Main Street is the most normally one.
So we, last, at the last meeting, if you recall, we presented a petition for this location, which you have. Four hundred and fifty signatures in favor, and we'd like to point out, we did a little homework in the meantime. Fifty-one of those are within probably a quarter mile of the location. So we did a map. The location is over here at this end, as you know where, at the edge of Springfield. So there are, we did three streets on one side, actually four streets, Thompson, Van Dyke, Braburn, and Dorset, or, I'm sorry, Thompson, Van Dyke, and Braburn, and on the other side of the street, Dorset, Barnum, and Granby. And there are fifty-one in favor, right in that very immediate district of it. I'd like to point out that this, the blue, as you know, is business. And one of the questions that had come up before was, what's the effect on this, what would the effect on this would be on Springfield residents? Would they come to our location? So we did some homework on that, too. And we found that within a half mile of us is a Shell station that is open twenty-four hours. So there is service there now for those residents. They have no need to come to us. In fact, it's currently closed because of being remodeled, so it should be a nice facility. And we'll simply service the neighbors in our area, and especially if we have fifty-one in the very immediate area who are in favor. We only had one person, Mr. Curtis, appear at the first meeting and speak. And if you recall, his only question was in the summertime, that he felt that there might be some extra noise and things. He's not here tonight.
Yes, I am.
Oh, terrific.
Right here.
Terrific, so he'll speak for himself, that's great. I will say that he had two things that he'd like us, would have liked us to do, and that is plant some more plantings between us, between our property and his, which we did. And a big part of the problem that we both have, he and I, is that the restaurants in the area don't have adequate parking, and so they park in our shopping center. And that spills over behind the building, which is where he lives. And so we thought if we put a fence up so that we could keep, that we would close that entire back area. So we tried that. We have a rope fence that we put up at five o'clock every night, and it simply says, "closed." And so that whole back area now is closed, and it has worked from that night to now successfully, and it keeps out the people who, the overflow from the restaurants in that area. The other problem, and he'll tell you, is that next to him is the bike shop, and they don't have adequate parking either. And so all their customers, especially when they do rides, which is after supper, park on our property, by his house, and in fact, line the street to the point that the residents there have had to ask the East Lung Metal police to come and at least restrict them to one side because safety vehicles can't get there. There are, we would suggest that there's no, there would be no adverse effect on the neighborhood. It's already a business section. It's a main thoroughfare. And previous to us, there was a little peach restaurant there. We took it over and changed it to a pride, and that was twenty-four hours. The letter from the police chief, which I'm sure you all have, he says that it's not likely to see a big increase in traffic, and it's appropriate that businesses like, that like businesses are treated the same. And by that, you know, I refer to the fact that the new station at the south end of town has been allowed to go twenty-four hours. That is, in fact, what precipitated us because that puts us at an unfair advantage to customers. Many of the businesses all around us already have late night and early morning hours. The bars are open until two, and in fact, they're selling booze. That is this an anti-competitive issue? Because when one station gets it and the other can't, it clearly gets involved with a lot of legal issues. If there's an issue with us, if the police or any neighbors find that there's a problem of you and can bring us back before you for a recall of the permit or whatever. Also, any activity that would happen would be in front of our building, not to bother the neighbors behind us. I know there's been objectors last time, and we thought about it, and the fact is, the objectors are assuming that there will be a problem. But I'm here to tell you that Pride operates about twenty locations now that are twenty-four hours, and there is no problem. And in fact, those twenty-four hour stations are safer and less trouble to the police than the ones that are closed. Because when they're closed, people tend to hang around and loiter outside. There's no lighting. They break in. But when we're open, it kind of keeps away all the bad guys because of the lights. We will also be able to monitor any problems outside, loiters, whatever, and parkers because we'll have staff there. And so we would ask that based on that, you would approve our request. And Mr. Channing, Attorney Channing, you may have something to add?
Before he does, and since you referenced it, I would like to ask the clerk to read in the letter from the police chief.
To the East Lung Metal Planning Board from Police Chief DeLazio, response to twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven operation of request for convenience stores that have ability to provide gasoline as well. The request, the request is a result of a newly constructed convenience store located at two two seven Shaker Road on the corner of Chestnut Street along with two other locations looking to expand their existing hours of operation to twenty-four seven. The other two locations are commonly referred to as Pride Gas located at thirteen and six eighteen North Main Street, respectively. This chief or current safety officer were not involved in the original special permit granted for two two seven Shaker Road dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen. In my report, you will find calls for the past two years at the two Pride stations presently being operated on North Main Street. The total number of calls for service were tallied from a specific category list which the officers at the Police Department Dispatch Center use. Not every call reason was utilized. Only the ones which were pertinent to the planning board's request. Those that were used are broken down on the front street. The complete list of calls, reasons at an officer's disposal for entry is the last two pages of the packet. Excuse me. Also included in this report is another convenience, C-Mart convenience located at six six eight North Main Street. I'm aware C-Mart does not have a gas station, but though you would like to compare the calls for service at this location, which is very close to vicinity of the Pride location at six one eight North Main Street. The comparison was done based on your request to determine what type of crime and activity might be happening around Pride at six one eight North Main Street. On the list of calls reasons, suspicious activity in assistance can represent a wide range of things. These categories usually are something short of a specific crime, but a complaint to the Police Department that triggers a response. The other category are self-explanatory. This report does not show an overwhelming issue in regards to crime for the Pride current hours of operation, yet the Police Department has no data to compare for hours of operation requested, nor can the Police Department say that every criminal or nuisance activity on surrounding streets is a responsibility of thirteen and six eighteen North Main Street exists. C-Mart at the Pride at six eighteen North Main Street have a higher volume for calls than the Pride located at thirteen North Main Street. In general, the further up North Main Street you travel from the center rotary, the calls for service increase. This is in part because of the robust commercial layout and the number of people patronizing the various businesses increases further north as you travel North Main Street corridor. All three twenty-four seven proposed locations have residential butters which could affect their quality of life for early morning operations. I understand that butters are usually property owners that have a common line, but for permits, butters can extend out to other property owners who may be impacted by the issue before the board. It would stand to reason, as long as a business was wide, was open to the public, it would most likely generate a call for service from the Police Department, whether it is from the business itself or from a butter. If expanded hours were granted to these establishments, I would expect any calls from a butter would be a quality of complaint such as disturbance, verbal or physical, or loud radio from a motor vehicle in the lot. There is an expectation of less tolerance to this type of activity once nighttime falls. In regards of types of calls from the business itself, one could expect intoxication, unruly patrons, shoplifting, and possible robbery for the expanded hours under requests. For the Police Department, it's not an issue with the current property owners of the business involved, but on whether the calls for service impact the quality of life for residents of East Lung Metal, especially the butters who will be directly impacted by expanded hours. The Police Department should be able to absorb the calls for service without increasing its manpower during the overnight. I spoke with Ms. McDonald and Mr. Baldock and expressed my thoughts that if it was to be twenty-four seven operations, the lack of customers might have the owner rethink about keeping the stores open all night if in fact twenty-four hour permit is granted. Not knowing the owner of two two seven Shaker Road, whether or not they are locally owned, I would have to rethink that opinion. Mr. Baldock related to me, it would certainly eliminate B and Es to any of these businesses and further explained he has had little problems with robberies because of this historic policy regarding cash on hand. Certainly, smaller owners would keep a store open if it was losing, would not keep a store open if it was losing money. I am not sure bigger corporations would look at it the same way. What type of business and the hours of operation are two big issues that impact quality of life for East Lung Metal residents? Businesses of similar like should have some uniformity in regards to their hours of operation. It is my opinion, the planning board is one of the first step in setting the tone of what the residents of East Lung Metal expect for quality of life. The rest of the town departments, such as the Police Department, also have an obligation to uphold their responsibilities with quality of life issues. Respectfully submitted, Chief of Police.
Thank you. I would like to point out at this point also, before we go forward, that the continued references to two twenty-five Shaker Road. With regard to that, that property has... references to 225 Shaker Road, with regard to that, that property has changed ownership, as I think many people know. Therefore, the special permit that was issued for that property will have to be reapplied for by the new owner. And that will give us an opportunity to reexamine the conditions that were put on that special permit. So as of this point in time, the owner of that property does not have a special permit. Okay? They have an approved site plan, but not a special permit. And so we cannot conclude definitively that that 24 hours will stand. We can't say that it'll change definitively either until someone comes in and asks for it. But at this point, that is up in the air, just to make that, that clear. Does your attorney wish to say something at this point?
He may. He's an attorney, right?
Maybe I'll just defer if we could open it up to the public first.
That'd be fine. You're welcome to. At this point then, is there any, does the board have any comments at this point?
I do. Please, do I just have some questions? So, so I view 618 North Main Street similarly to the same way that I would view your Page Boulevard property? Which is hours until 11 o'clock, Monday through Friday, Saturday until 10 o'clock on Sunday.
Correct.
So that is also a long commercial district. And the rear of both, of both sides of that district or both sides of that street is residential. So they have a 10 o'clock closing and you want a midnight closing in a very similar kind of demographic.
No closing.
Yeah, excuse me, Tony Park. So what's, what's the difference in your mind?
That area has many gas stations on each side. We have one down the street that's open 24 hours at the corner of Page and Berkshire. And then the Speedway to our east of this site is open 24 hours. And there's a racing mart that's open 24 hours too. So we're kind of in the middle and there's, we saw no need for it, especially since the one on Berkshire satisfies our need. It's only a few miles down, so we couldn't justify having two.
And so I went to your website, so I noticed that the overwhelming majority of your city locations have 24 hours.
That's exactly right.
But, but in your suburbans, they don't. So as an example, so in Long Meadow at 1730 Long Meadow Street, you're from 6 to 11. One of your stations at 824 Suffield Street in Agawam is until 10. Both properties in Sims Berry is until 10 and the one in Hadley's until 11.
Correct.
So.
I can answer for each one of them.
Okay.
Okay? The two Sims Burries roll up the streets at 9 o'clock. It's absolutely dead. Hadley, we're surrounded by 24-hour stations. Long Meadow, we would like to go 24 hours, but can't. And the first one?
Suffield Street.
Suffield Street, Agawam? When we rebuild that, that will be 24 hours. It's a, it's a lease right now. It's a very small piece of property and it's in dire need of rebuild, which it will get in the year 2018 and then we'll go 24 hours.
So your Long Meadow property said you can't go 24. What's the restriction there?
Jim, do you?
Yeah, Jim. So Long Meadow actually has a regulation, unlike East Long Meadow, that restricts special permits. For retail sale, you could be 24 hours in Long Meadow if you apply to the Board of Selectment. But if you want to be open between midnight and 6:00 AM, you need a special permit approval by the Board of Selectment. But unlike here in the town of East Long Meadow, the regulations don't exist. And so I think that's a point I'll certainly make up later when I talk about the restrictions and whether or not we should even be before here on the 618 North Main Street. But very briefly, that's an issue of a tax change amendment or a town charter change that allows the restriction that Long Meadow has. It's something that they've passed. I can give you the regulation for the record in a second, but that's the difference. That's why we can't in Long Meadow unless we were to go before the Board of Selectment.
So can I continue?
Please.
So as Mr. Kingston referenced, so in reality, 225 Shaker does not even have a special permit in place. So Mr. Channing, or Attorney Channing at the last meeting, mentioned the competition issue and the ability to bear the service to your clients. And so you mentioned some of the major employers in the region. So in conjunction with Robin, we chose Cartamundi, we chose Lennox, we chose Bay State Medical Center, and we chose the prisons just down the street. So if I could. So the shifts at Cartamundi are 6:45 AM to 2:45 PM, 2:45 PM to 10:54 PM, 10:45 PM to 6:45 AM. Lennox shifts are 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Bay State Medical Center, as you can imagine, has many shifts, 11 to 11:30 for a 12-hour shift, 3 to 3:30 AM, 7:00 PM to 7:30 AM. And the Connecticut prison shifts are 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM to midnight, and midnight to 8:00. So with your existing hours, you can adequately service every person who comes out of that, those locations, either before or after their shift.
I'd like to address that.
Okay. So I guess, and the other question I have, and I just continue it. So your current operations at 618 North Main Street are 4:30 AM to midnight? At least your website says that.
Correct.
Okay. So really, you're picking up about four and a half hours. So I guess another question I'd like to address is, how many, how many customers do you really expect to get during that timeframe?
First, we'll get enough customers to justify it. Our experience has shown that, that it's, if it's a busy store during the day, it will be a busy store at night. And so there will be enough to justify. If we're open till 12, or when we're open till 12, by the time the cashier gets out of there, it's 12:30. And then by the time the next person gets there, half an hour to 45 minutes early, it's 4 o'clock or before 4:00. So we're really only dealing with a few hour gap in between. And that's easily justified, but a number of customers will come in in that gap time. Okay? Your first question?
It was about covering the shifts.
Oh, covering the shifts. What prompted this was our manager who said to us once, "I'm going to lose a lot of business when that new station opens." And we said, "What do you mean?" And she said, "Well, a lot of our customers say that when they leave for shift, when they take a break during the day and et cetera, or during the shift, that they will be going to the new station on the corner." Absolutely, she said, "I expect to see a big drop." And, because they've told her that. So it's a small town, we trade all the customers. That's where it came from. Plus our desire just to fill it, the gap is so small now that, you know, you never hear about problems in the morning hours. And this is basically the same thing, it's just filling in the gap. And frankly, with the problems from the restaurants next door and them getting out at two and dropping beer bottles and leaving the mess and parking on our property, we'll be able to monitor that a lot better. And we'll be able to see that that doesn't get, become the problems that it has. I think a lot of the, what we heard from the chief is the number of calls there had nothing to do with Pride. They had to do with the customers who are parking on Pride property overnight because we are, we provide the parking for all the businesses in that area. And this way we'll have someone there and we'll have lights on to monitor.
So if 225 Shaker does not have a special permit and 618 expands to 24 hours, you, you believe there'll be sufficient traffic to leave the prison, leave Cartamundi, and go all the way down North Main Street to that location?
Not only that, but what we are seeing now in the, the convenience store business is that, as we all know, we're in a 24-hour society now. Our, our country, our world is 24 hours. People are on the internet all the time, people are traveling about, they're going somewhere, there's someplace open. And so there are people out and about all the time. And some will stop in, some want fuel, some want coffee. It's, it's not a big, it's not a big thing anymore for us to be open or for, you know, you're just going to go out and drive around at four and you see that there's public safety vehicles. There's a lot of things happening at that night. It's another world and it's a perfectly good world. And a few bad people give the whole thing a bad image, but those bad people are out there anyways. And it's clearly that. And we provide a service with coffee and food and fuel and all that, all the time.
My last question is, I don't know all of the opening hours for the other gas stations in town, but would you suspect your 4:30 is probably the first station to open?
It could be, it could be. And it's very busy. And when we're that busy at 4:30, we know there's action near the rest of the time. It's as simple as that.
So I guess what I'm getting to is, if you open at 4:30 and no one else is open at 4:30, you're getting all that early morning traffic before anybody else in town?
But we're also seeing that there's that much action, as we call it. If it's there at 4:30, it's there at 3:30 and it's there at 2:00. And there's a need for it. And we just want to service our customers, that's all. And we're not going to bother anybody. What happens in our station is totally blocked, totally blocked from the neighborhoods because it's a strip shopping center and it's a big one. And so the people in the back don't even know it, especially now that we've roped off the back so there's no traffic going through. And then people across the street, they're in the middle of business anyways.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board at this point?
Not at this point.
In that case, I'll open it up to the public and I again ask you to approach the microphone, give your name and address because we will not be able to hear you from back there. The gentleman here was first.
My name's John Fitzgerald, 14 North Street, East Long Meadow. We have enough problems in the north end of town. Firebombed my neighbor's mailbox the other morning in the middle of the night. There's breaking and entering, you know, gun down on La Salle and Gates Avenue. There's drug dealing in Heritage Park. The elements coming up from Springfield. Why don't we leave, why don't we be left alone? Why do we have to make somebody more coins in his pocket when there's no need for it? I plowed snow for 30 years. I never ran out of gas or diesel fuel. I had enough responsibility to buy my fuel on time, get to the gas station before it got too dark. I never had a problem. Why do we have to accommodate everybody that forgot to do something, their mother didn't tell them, or the wife didn't say, "You better get gas, honey." Personal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Richards?
Good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. I spoke previously about the two applications, center town and the north end, and my opinion has not changed. But I would like to make two comments. The first one has to do with the reference to Long Meadow and their special permitting regulations. East Long Meadow is not so unlike Long Meadow. We are in special permit for this use because it's a combined use of a gas station and a convenience store. If the gas station were coming in alone, that would be a different situation, but it's the combination of the two uses that create nuisance issues and that's why we're here. So I just want to clarify that. The other thing is, Mr. Bolduc nicely put the map up that I was going to put up. The yellow district is our C residential district. Those are our most, those are our smaller lot sizes. Generally, it's 10,000 square feet now, but we have many that are 5,000 square foot lots. It's a very congested area. If you look at the blue, the blue abuts directly with the yellow. The blue is our business zone. And throughout the years, we've tried to create buffers when we could, but people who buy in the yellow zone that abut the blue zone know that they are directly abutting a business zone and they know that they perhaps will have to deal with some issues that most of us never have to deal with because we live in our little subdivisions or on the Connecticut line or whatever. And what's happening in our business community isn't impacting on where most of us live. The people understand that. They know during the day, they may have to put up with more nuisance issues. I know this because I've heard it more, more often than not throughout the years that I've been involved in town government. And they understand that business has to do business. But do they have to do business between midnight and 5:00 AM in the morning? Do they, do these residents still have to tolerate? Now, Mr. Bolduc says 51 people are in favor of this that live in close proximity to this, to his station. I'm talking about the entire town. Do we really need to create a potential to bring more people into town through our streets during the night when we should be resting, we should be, you know, getting ready for the next day? It's, it seems to me that it's a little bit of overkill for our quiet suburban town. And I really think you should think long and hard about those people who are going to experience what I just talked about, living in close proximity. He can't guarantee what's going to happen, we can't guarantee, but we know from hearing about other communities and just what Russ Denver said about the areas that don't have this, why should East Long Meadow succumb to this pressure? Thank you for your time.
Sir?
Good evening. Roland O'Curtis, 23 Van Dyke Road, East Long Meadow. Bob and I have been talking for a while about the 24-hour convenience store. We talked about the abundance of people, especially in the summertime, gathering around the back of the store. And he has been a very good neighbor in terms of cleaning things up, keeping them straight. And he was very nice enough to put some extra hedges along the fence line to keep the dirt from flowing over when the dumpsters are empty, which has been a real problem for me, getting out every morning, cleaning up after the dumpsters are empty. My wife and I have been discussing this and one thing came to mind, especially since now I'm home on a 24-hour basis, is that your trucks, when they pull in, are there for a long period of time. We get the exhaust coming into the house all the time. I know I have called the police on this because the ambulances used to park there. And I had to call the police on them to get them out of there, to move them someplace else because the fumes were just overbearing. Bob, I have no problem with you as a business owner, but I truly do not want a 24-hour convenience store. Went through this with Little Peach when we first moved there. That was a hassle. When you bought it beautifully, you've done a great job with the property, but I really don't want a 24. I don't want to go back to what we had before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's Phil LaRosa and I live at 61 Harwich Road. Mr. Bolduc made reference to the petition that the people signed and around the Springfield end of town, if you will. I would just ask, Mr. Bolduc or any of us, has anybody certified that they're East Long Meadow residents? It's a question that comes to mind, whether they came into doors. Springfield, as we all know, is very close proximity to there. Maybe some people from Springfield enjoy it. Secondly, Mr. Bolduc referred to the Shell Station. We know it as Grampy's, being open 24 hours. I can tell you just last Saturday, my wife and I observed that the tanks were taped off and that business appears to be closed. So I would challenge that comment. I can, I can say as a resident, or my family being here since 1960, I've been in and out, but my family's here since 1960 and my wife forever. The line before, between East Long Meadow and Springfield is getting blurred. If you shop in our stores, you know that. We have grandchildren, we can't bring them to Heritage Park because it's, we go to Long Meadow Park who has, for some reason, not able, not as close to Springfield, hasn't brought it into its community. But our, our town line is blurred and I, I wish it would stop. We don't need to do a service that helps other residents in East Long Meadow. If you come through the rez, through the rotary between 9:30 and 10:30, our little town is rolled up. It's rolled up for the most part. Those people are going to drink at establishments, they're going to drink at establishments. Doesn't, it's not quite as bad of a problem. But we don't want to invite more people in. The townspeople of East Long Meadow are satisfied with what we have and we like our lifestyle. That's why we're here. We don't live in Springfield, we don't live in the city, we live in East Long Meadow. Let's try to keep it that way. My wife and I are strongly against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Sid Starks, 28 Elm Street. I'm primarily concerned about the rotary Pride Station, but also the North Main Street section. One of the things you said, Mr. Bolduc, busy during the day, you expect to be busy during the night. It's loud during the day. So how come it's going to be quiet at night? loud during the day. So how come it's going to be quiet at night? It won't be. It will be loud. This is the third public hearing or the third time we've had this hearing. With that said, you've heard people say, the upkeep, trash, noise, it's still going to be there. Nothing against Mr. Bolduc, but that's just the way the Pride Station is. You said your employees would take care of any of the crowds. I know for a fact, if you stop by the Center, Center Pride Station, and I've seen it at, at the one on North Main, there's a fire lane. Where do people park? Right in front of the Pride Station in the fire lane. Do the employees say anything? No, because usually they're understaffed and they're really busy. So it's still going to be noisy. Chief DeLassio just pointed it out in his letter a few minutes ago. You have a decision. It's quality of life. We moved to East Long Meadow for quality of life because there's an influx of business and residential that work in harmony. Again, we've got some businesses that are, we're trying to threaten that. It's up to you to make the decision, and we have faith in you to make the correct decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Ralph Butler, 4 Elm Crest Street. I just want to reiterate my, my opposition to this particular address, and I'll have more to say when we talk about the center. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the board?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. As far as addressing the board, I just had a question. I believe this is under a special permit now, and I was just wondering what the actual hours of operation on the special permit is, and do we have it?
Yes, we do. There are no hours on the special permit now. We have been advised by town attorney that to change the hours under which they're currently operating, we would need to put those hours into the special permit, and that's on advice of town attorney.
Okay. And is that, I know I'm jumping ahead of myself because the next one's coming. Am I to assume that that's the same on both?
No, it's not the same on both.
So there was hours on one, but not the other?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And again, I'm just going to reiterate, obviously, I've talked at the last two meetings. I am against the business zone, commercial zones, having any business open 24 hours. My thought in town is industrial, industrial garden park, which is more industrial zoned. That's why we allow 24 hours. But once you come in contact with more and more residential, that we should limit the hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none. I'll ask if Mr. Bolduc or his attorney has any comments at this point?
Just briefly, please. Just for the record, here's the Long Meadow Town Charter Regulation from 6316. It's actually the town bylaw, not the zoning bylaw, and so it's applicable to separate from a special permit consideration. So I think, just, just briefly, like you mentioned when we were here maybe a couple months ago, I respect Attorney Don He a lot, but I think we were at a standstill with respect to my difference of opinion with respect to whether or not we should even be here with respect to this specific location. Again, this one, back in 1998, when the special permit was issued, in fact, Ms. Richards was actually on the board, and you had the opportunity, the board at that point had the opportunity to impose conditions, impose restriction on hours, and there wasn't. And at that point, because we were conversing with the town as a sign of good faith and good neighbors, we came back before you with this request. But I think you don't, with all due respect, have the authority or the jurisdiction at this point to address whether or not we can be 24 hours. That's not to say that if we were to open 24 hours and there were, in fact, or was to be an adverse impact on the environment, on the atmosphere, then obviously we could be back before you with respect to that, to evaluate it and see whether or not, in fact, an additional condition should be or could be imposed. But at this point, as the special permit reads that was issued, it only clears that if there's a substantial change in the plans, or a change in the plans, we have to come back before you. Well, the hours of operations have nothing to do with the plans. There's no condition with respect to the hours. At this point, so with all due respect, I don't believe that you have the authority at this point to hear our requests. I think we have, by right, have a right to. As I mentioned, the town of Long Meadow obviously has the ability to restrict hours, and it requires an applicant to go additional step to open between the hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m. That's not existent at this point in the town of East Long Meadow. It appears that, obviously, from the fellow residents that spoke today, that perhaps that's something the town could look at and should look at with respect to having it as an additional tax amendment to whether it be the town bylaws or the zoning bylaws. But as it stands today, there's nothing preventing a convenience store from being open 24 hours. In fact, the definition of convenience store in and of itself by the town, the planning laws say it's between typically between 15 to 24 hours. So it insinuates the fact you can be open 24 hours. I respect Mr. Curtis's opinion, obviously, as a director of butter. He'd prefer us not to be 24 hours. Certainly has a lot, I think, as a director of butter. He certainly has a say and a strong say before you, but he doesn't have more of a say than Ms. Lassard, who actually lives behind Mr. Curtis, who also lives before him.
Excuse me. Please don't interrupt.
Sorry.
She's actually asking or imploring you to allow us to be 24 hours. She thinks it would, in fact, improve the neighborhood, improve the atmosphere, especially with respect to some of the other establishments. And then as Mr. Bolduc mentioned, we had, I think, 51 other individuals in the, in the vicinity, within a quarter of a mile, who also supported our request. So I think, in closing, I just look at with respect to this specific location, I think that, obviously, there hasn't been a scintilla of evidence that establishes beyond a doubt that there will be an adverse impact if you were to allow us to be 24 hours. And that's what the standard is. I think it was a BJ's Wholesale case out of Hopkinton, which said, was Judge Agnes issued the decision, said, there might be a lot of concerns, there might be a lot of speculation as to what could happen, but that's not valid for a planning board to decide as to what could happen and what may happen in the future. You have to be presented on the record before you and determine as to whether or not, beyond a doubt, that what we're proposing, if in fact you have the authority to act on it, that what we are proposing, in fact, is something that will have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. Not may have an adverse impact or could impact, has an adverse impact. And I don't think with respect to all the other establishments there, the way Pride handles its business, and in fact, the police calls themselves. If you look at 618 North Main Street, there were 33 calls in the past two years. Scintillates actually happen off hours, or hours that Pride is currently closed. Obviously, that would be a change if Pride were open. I think the first one you look at with respect to the police log is actually an individual who was there trying to get gas when Pride was closed. Police had to come and assist him and told him that he wasn't able to. Obviously, that wouldn't be an issue if, if we're able to be open 24 hours. And I do respect individuals thinking that this is solely a business decision by Pride, and obviously, it does play into it, but this is also a customer. I think if you know Pride and you know the Pride mantra, it's welcome to Pride, it's opening friendly, wanting to accommodate and customer service, wanting to provide to individuals. While there may be some shift workers that, that get off at midnight and could get gas before they go into their shift, why should they have to? Or could get gas after. If you're there at midnight and you want to come out and grab a sandwich or grab something to eat or get gas after work, I mean, people that work nine to five, is it fair to say that, oh, you can't, at 5:00 o'clock, you can't go get your gas just because you're a shift worker? No, you can't get your gas until either you wake up in the next day or before you're going into work. But because we don't want to accommodate you, it's not a matter of accommodate Pride per se, it's just allowing us to be able to assist. I think Chief DeLassio points out, obviously, that there may not be, in fact, a, a big impact. We may not choose to do it. But I think the only question before the planning board right now is whether or not we have the ability to do it, and whether or not going forward, if without a doubt, there would be, or will be, an adverse impact on the town by allowing this to happen. And at this point, I just don't think that I've heard anything, aside from cause for concern, that establishes the high threshold that you need to consider with respect to this request.
I'm going to take it back to the board at this point and ask if any of the board members have any questions or need to have any additional input or evidence presented to them?
No. I do not, no.
If you, you either do or don't, because if you don't, we'll close the public hearing.
I do not. I do not.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this point to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Closing the public hearing means that we can no longer take testimony? We can discuss what we've heard, but we can no longer take new testimony. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Take it to the board. Any discussion on this?
Yes, may I go to the?
Please. Remember, we're discussing what's been presented to us.
Yes. And Pride Gas Station on the northern area, closer to the Springfield line, is located right up in here. And all this blue area that we're looking at here, and here, and here, which is all of Route 83, is all zoned industrial. So I just want to make sure we're very clear. One of, one of the issues that I have with allowing a-
Zone business.
Business, excuse me, I apologize. It's zone business. One of the issues that I have with allowing 24-hour usage in any of our currently zoned business areas is what will happen in the future, the precedence set, the other businesses that now operate within that area or could come up and then operate in this area, because there is some, not much, but some undeveloped. It would be a precedent set that they have the opportunity to operate in a 24-hour capacity. That is my issue.
Anyone else want to say anything at this point?
Yeah. So one, I want to thank the, the police chief. His report was very thorough, and we asked for additional information, and I thought he did a wonderful job. So I want to go on record as thanking him for his, his report. Two, Mr. Bolduc runs an outstanding business. He's been in business for a long time. His stores are clean. The customer service is wonderful. We should thank him for wanting to try to invest in East Long Meadow. He has invested in East Long Meadow. So I want to thank him for that. I am truly confounded by the fact that there is a, apparently he has a special permit with no hour restrictions.
In 1988.
In 1988. And then the advice that George, you have mentioned that we've received from town council, do we have anything in writing from him regarding that issue?
I-
That a change of hours now-
Nothing was required.
So quite, so technically and legally, he, he could essentially start and run a 24-hour business right now. And then it would be a matter of zoning enforcement. The zoning administrator would come in and cite him for, I don't know what he would cite him for. If you have a special permit and there's no hours restrictions, what do you cite the person for legally? So that's, that, that confounds me to no end, as a legal point of view.
We're, we're being asked here to amend the special permit to explicitly put in the hours, okay? That's, is before us. And the question is, do we or do we not make that amendment? If we don't make the amendment, then the special permit stands the way it is, and we may get into the scenario that you're talking about.
So either way, Mr. Bolduc could run a 24-hour convenience store.
I am not in a position to offer an opinion on that because I'm not an attorney.
But the fact that there's no hours in the existing special permit-
Again.
Okay, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the special permit?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. If you vote yes, we will amend the special permit. If you vote no, we will not accept the amendment to the special permit. Okay? So if you vote no, we will not insert the 24-hour provision in there, and the special permit will stand as it is. The vote yes, then the special permit will be amended to explicitly allow 24-hour operation. Is that clear?
It's clear to me.
Yeah.
But I think we should clear, clarify it to the audience.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, but in reality, so if we vote no to amend it-
Do not amend it.
Vote against amending it, okay?
Correct.
The next question that George is going to ask is, are we in favor? If we're in favor, we say yea. If not, nay.
But at that point, okay, the special permit stands. If Mr. Bolduc and his lawyer interpret that as saying that there are no hours and they can operate any hours they want to, then it's up to town attorney and the zoning enforcement officer to take charge. It's out of our hands. Okay?
There's only so much we can do on this one.
Yeah. We're the planning board. We don't enforce.
Right. Our hands are a little-
The town attorney feels strong enough that they cannot, under the current special permit, extend their hours, then it's between him and the zoning enforcement officer to, to work on that. It's not our, our job.
So a yes vote is to amend to allow a 24-
Explicitly allow 24. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the amendment does not go through. Move to the next step.
We would like to withdraw the Elm Street location, the request.
North Main Street.
I would like to, I would like to withdraw our request for 13 North-
Okay, we have, the, the hearing on that is still open. We'll need to close the public hearing and then vote on the request to withdraw that and not vote on the amendment so that we're not, it's being withdrawn, it's without prejudice, I guess, is the way to put it. So we'd have a motion to close the public hearing on, well, first of all, we need to open the continuation, sorry, the public hearing on 13 North Main Street. And then since we have a request to, pending to withdraw that, we'll close it. So I'll have, entertain a motion to close that public hearing on 13-
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the request to withdraw the request for the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bolduc.
Thank you all.
We have a 7:30 delayed- Request for a waiver of site plan for Power Clean Fitness Juice Bar?
Well, let George do it.
Come, sit, sit, sit. Identify yourself, name and address.
Mike Zolkwitz, 45 Baldwin Street, East Long Meadow. Oh, no, my residence is 488 Turnpike Road, Summers, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
And apparently I went and bought this all wrong. So I am here with a site plan waiver, and basically what happened was we built our gym, the original plan, we did not have room for a shake bar.
Before we proceed, did you have a signed copy of the application?
Uh, the application?
The, 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 the request for a waiver?
Yes, that I have.
And this, this is not the original, though?
No, no, we gave, we gave the original. What happened was Gary McMahon is in Florida, so to snail mail it back and forth was impossible.
Okay, we can't proceed on this without an original signed request.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize. We were told that you'd show up with that tonight.
No, I believe my business partner, Steve, went and talked to the planning department and said that that would be sufficient enough.
No.
No.
It says, it says here, 81117, Mike will bring the original, but it doesn't have the original owner signature.
That is true. I do have it. It's not with me. It's actually back at my gym because it wasn't signed. I didn't bring it with me.
Okay, let's just table this, okay, till our next meeting, because I'm, I'm sorry, but we, we need the paperwork.
Okay.
Okay, it just has to be. It, it, it would be inappropriate for us to vote on this without having the original paperwork.
Okay, so we need the original paperwork with the actual signature on it?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll just snail mail it.
Yeah, and it, well, our next meeting will be the 3rd of September.
5th.
The 5th of September, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So you got time to get it.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Sorry about that, but-
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's plenty of other business to come before the board tonight.
Hearing none.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.